Yeah.
What I'll do is change the view of it. We're on YouTube. Change here in a second. You will be able to see the full screen. Where we're talking to Frank or everything else. Um, like this. So we are good to go.
Sounds good, Adam. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting to order and before we do the pledge allegiance, I'd also like to thank all those who have made this possible to meet in person. And everybody here that is meeting in person because it feels good to kind of be in person, talking to each other, which is really huge for me. So we'll start with the pledge allegiance to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Cork, if you can call the role, please.
Counselor New.
Here.
Counselor Galanese.
Here.
Counselor Verl.
Here.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Counselor Regan.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Salamandra.
Here.
Counselor Pruitt.
Here.
Mary Latino.
Here. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda in this work session is to talk about council communication. So I'm going to kick it off and after I kick it off, the floor is open for discussion. My focus, my, my look at council communication and you know, we can look back at the last 16 months or whatever, maybe almost even 17 months now. Um, we've had our challenges with communication going back and forth. Um, what I'd like to do, at least my point and Council Pruitt's given us a lot of opportunities and input also, so I, I hope to hear some of that from the rest of council. My focus is to kind of go back to the basics. That's my goal. And the basics for me are the rules of order procedure and the 17 ethics. And on top of all that is just a respect for each other. And I know we are passionate about several issues. It is challenging to, to control our passions sometimes. One thing that um, a tool to maybe use is to allow counselors to speak their viewpoints. Because each of us has a viewpoint. And our viewpoints might differ. That's quite all right. But respectfully, let a counselor speak to viewpoints, get that viewpoint out. I ask respect is key in that viewpoint, please. And then on the backside, if you have another comment that relates to that, that viewpoint, it's perfectly okay to differ with that viewpoint. If we follow the rules of order procedure, raise your hand, speak your difference and respect each other as far as that difference goes. That's how I would like us to move forward as a council in communication. We're going back to the basics instead of layering things on top of things. So that's the mayor's point of view. I'm, I'm open for communication, discussion.
I'm ready.
How many, how many pages?
I've got 15 copies. I wasn't sure it would be here. But I'm ready where you are, whatever.
So I mean, the floor is open. I see Counsel Cameron.
Just one comment, and that is that some of us are not as uh, hearing acute as others. So there are times when you, somebody's going, so there was nine so and so's and I hear maybe five. And I go, was that nine or five? Or what was that you said? I hope that's a permitted uh, interjection when somebody's in the midst. Because they could be, it could be 10 minutes before they finish and then it might, you know, there might be somebody else in the room who also was wondering if it was nine or five. Or they just heard five and they said, I heard five, but it ended up being nine and you know, they might as well know as they're going along, as they're processing, hopefully factual information the person's providing, that they get the right number or you know, date.
Fair comment because I, I do have hearing challenges. So as a council, Counsel Cameron is asking us for interjection for clarification. And Counsel Cameron, maybe just to identify that. A simple clarification without a lengthy response or rebuttal back and forth. Simple clarification. Is everybody okay with a request? Maybe not an interruption, but a request for clarification. You know, wait for the pause of the sentence or something. Don't jump in in the middle.
But, but, but I, just in the Zoom meetings I've done in my business with corporations and people in other places, it, it happens because it just seems natural to them to say, what did you say? You know, or did you mean that?
And sometimes I, I have the same problem. I will take a little quick note and I'll look for that opportunity to say, may I get clarification? So asking for clarification at a certain point. And I, I'm looking for council's input because it's all of us that need to get along.
Fine by me.
Yeah, all of what Ken said and what you said is entirely reasonable. In my opinion.
Looking for clarification and, and comments from other counselors.
Well, I, I see it a lot differently than you do. I think that's a really valid point, but it's probably one of 100 points we can go through. If we have enough time to do that and set up really the parameters, the, you know, the, the rules, so to speak, and then they become more familiar with the rules of order at, at today's meeting, great. I didn't think we would have that opportunity. I thought today what we would come up with is sort of an agreement on the direction that you offered one alternative for. And then if everybody agreed that it was even an issue to try to get together in some sort of work breakout sessions to try to develop uh, our plans more fully. That's what I was sort of thinking. Again, it's a little, little different approach. If we have the time to, you know, rough out everything, get it all done tonight, all the better. I'll stay till midnight, but I think it'd take longer than that.
Yeah, and that's a good point, you know. For me, um, going through every possible opportunity that might involve itself in communication could be a challenge. Counselor Cameron is asking for a specific clarification of factual.
I'm not trying to change anything.
So I mean, you know, that's a, a point of interest and a point of clarification and, and I'm perfectly okay with that. If it's done with respect, it's perfectly okay.
Well, I'm sure in his business, if he's on a Zoom call with other pharmaceuticals, it's like, is that 400 cc's we're going to put on there too?
Well, yes, like. I have to get clarification. That's a good point.
Counsel Regan.
Um, I would, this is outside of council meetings themselves. But I would ask us all, speaking of respect, to not be posting personal statements about each other. It's one thing to comment on things, you know, that were spoken, opinions, what someone said, but to actually come out and say something personal against someone on social media. Even if you don't follow social media, I think everyone here knows that most of Geneva does. And even if I'm not following it, things get sent to me that are hard to swallow frankly, um, to, to go into the next meeting and pretend I didn't know that that was said. So you know, I think it's great to um, work well together as a team, but it can be influenced by things that people are saying publicly in public statements about each other that come back to us. So I would just ask that people show respect outside of meetings as well as inside meetings.
Counsel Regan, I, I respect that. I am, I am so happy. I haven't been on social media for well over 12 months. And it's, it's made me a better person internally, I think. Even though I will get screenshots every now and then. And um, I think the, the, what you're asking for is legitimate. And I think council needs to kind of have that conversation saying, are you willing outside of city council on social media to be respectful? And, and honestly, I think it falls within the code of ethics. I really do. Because we're being asked as public officials, elected public officials, to live to a, a higher standard. And that higher standard to me is to not be derogatory to other counselors.
So the social media has to be defined because to be honest, you had some comments in the newspaper that would be considered a social media that also reflected pretty poorly on us. So it's got to be more than just Facebook. It's got to be any media outside of our own, our own council meeting, I would think.
Good.
That would be my assessment that some of us use the rules of order as to say when someone's wrong, but we haven't. Like I can be wrong all the time according to you. But no one's hearing when we think, when I think it breaks down, which is when counselors accuse uh, any of us of having bad intentions rather than just legislating the people's business. And so if I bring up a resolution on chickens or police or the marina, I believe it is count, other counselors' obligation to respond to that idea, not to what they think of me for bringing it. Um, and then we can start to move on to talk about the points about the idea rather than how you all feel about me bringing it.
Very important. I think, and I've said that at previous meetings, focusing on the issue is critical. And that's not easy to do all the time, but I, I do agree.
But I, I would like to ask you to notice this when it comes from you and from other people.
I, I'm, I can totally understand that. I can appreciate that. And I think in the last six months at least, I've modified the way I, I absorb things and the way I see things and the way I respond to things. I'm not perfect. I will, I will be the first one to put the hand on and say that. I am definitely not perfect, but I am trying. Other counselors, based on the comments you're hearing. And I, and I agree, social media definitely needs to be defined. I took that as electronic social media, not newspaper written social media.
Anything speaking out loud on the street, anything where it's outside of council. But you know, I realize it's sort of contentious, but if you notice where we've mostly gotten trouble, it's for actions or comments or things that happened when we weren't together as a group. It's when we've been on private time, if you will. And I realized that the code of ethics has said that as counselors, we're supposed to, you know, really be on our game and and a positive reflection for the community at all times. But that's a mighty high standard. People do have a personal life and personal opinions. And there should be a time when they can pursue that. I, I would like to, I, I don't think it's feasible, but I'd like to make a rule that we don't really comment or, or have any interest in if that happens outside of our responsibilities. If it comes down to a personal involvement in society, that shouldn't be something that we're regulating or even talking about.
I think you're saying we shouldn't do that?
I think people ought to have a personal life.
So in other words.
If, if all of a sudden I decided to drink a lot or drive cars a lot or, I don't know, paint my house pink, I don't think that really is anything that the council has to be involved in.
Okay, so I can go to a rally and hold the sign.
And you shouldn't be criticized if, if you feel that way or if there's somebody who's an activist on something. Or if you're, you know, you, if you have political reasons, it's a certain, certain sort. Or if you don't like the Girl Scouts and you want to say that in public, shouldn't it be something that reflects on council? That's my opinion. I, I think that conflicts with our code of ethics though, which says I'm supposed to be on a game 100% of the time. So to me, I think that's unfair because I think, I don't know how we can hold everybody to that standard. As you just said, it's perfect all the time, you know. You're going to do things in your personal life that's going to create the kind of acrimony that we respond to when everybody in the community starts rapping about us. So I'd like that to just, you know, stew in that a little bit, see if there's any way that we can really curb that. Because I think that if you think back about the major points of difficulty that we've had, it's for not things that well, I should say it's not always for someone that happens during council, but most of it's happened outside of council.
Counsel Salamandra, oh, Counsel Galanese, I apologize. I'm not looking up there. Have you been up, have you been raising your hand for a while?
The biggest face in the room.
You're muted.
Take your hat.
It's already spoken yet. Please do.
I'm a little taken back by this whole conversation, like all of a sudden, a year and four months later, we want to decide how we're supposed to act. Um, I, I got my feet held to the fire and I take full responsibility for it. But it seems like there's a lot of passes going on lately. And all of a sudden now we, we want to have this discussion and I'm supposed to just sit here and just be like, okay, yeah, this is, this is fair. And uh, now that the field is uh, level and equal. I, I, we should follow the rules of ethics. You break the rules of ethics. Ethics by, the ethics board finds rulings and presents them to council. We need to respect that. On this story, I mean, we can go on and on and say we want to do this. We want to do that. I can tell you firsthand, I learned a lesson, a very valuable lesson. And I think that I'm the only one that has, uh, the bar was risen, now it's on the ground. And every single time we have this conversation, it chokes me up because I know what I went through for council meetings after council meetings. And, and you guys are a little taken back because somebody might criticize you. Well, you didn't sit there for council meeting after council meeting and, and pretty much say that you're the boogeyman and the devil. And I've learned from it and I think that my actions and my tone in council meetings since then has proven uh, my sorrow and uh, the way I conducted myself. Whether it be right or wrong, or if somebody wants to agree with me or not agree with me, I really don't care. But the bottom line is that I just think that this conversation, to me, I'm chuckling inside when I hear this. Because we have comments that I read on emails to constituents. Let's just say about the police that they should have thick skin. But all of a sudden counselors want to have thin skin. And it bothers you when somebody criticizes you or comes after you. I, I, to me, it's just stick to the code of ethics. What they pass down, we need to respect. They put time into this. How are we expect the, the police review board to work, the body camera board to work, any of these boards to work? If we do not respect and honor what they say. And it's pretty simple. I mean, this conversation should just take two, three minutes of communication. It should just be follow the rules of ethics on this story, respect one another. We don't have to like one, each other. But respect one another. That's it. It's as simple as that. As far as Facebook, this and that, I mean, if you bring it upon yourself, you're open game. I'm sorry. We're, 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 I guess politicians. I, I don't have to say something that you like to make you feel good. Just like you don't do it to me. So I think that we're going a little, this, we're, we're remaking the rules here and, and it's really bothering me. It's simple. Rules of ethics. We, we went, we went and took some classes. We did, did some things. If we have not learned how to respect each other at this point as a month and four, or a year and four months into this, then you have no one to blame but yourself for anything that comes forward. That's the way that I feel.
Thank you, counselor. And we're not changing any rules yet. Counsel Salamandra.
Um, Frank, the only, the reason that you were the one who got your feet held to the fire is because you said you wanted to take a gun and shoot and kill the squares on.
You.
I have not done that. And so.
Oh, I know. You're, you're innocent. You're not right.
Okay.
I was sitting, I, I, I've gone out of my, I, I never went out of my way. I've never gone out of my way to do things, okay? I wasn't on a soapbox.
I'm talking.
Whatever. This is ridiculous. Miss innocent over there. Yeah, exactly.
I'm speaking.
We're talking about communication.
It's my turn.
Because I always get lectured.
This is exactly where our problem was.
Everybody was asked how they felt about communication. I said I would like the mayor to notice when, like if the rules are broken and I'm trying to move in that way so we can work in a more fair way. Other people, Jan said that she wants people to stop making comments on social media. Now, rather than say what Frank wants, Frank had to attack all of us that we can't take the heat. Well, I've been taking the heat much more than you and much longer.
Okay.
You, if you think that our opinions are disrespectful, we think you, I think you're disrespectful when you interrupt, when you say, when you say things like, this is corrupt or we're sneaking it behind people's backs. Just stick to what you want, Frank, and leave us out of it.
Don't speak for me, Laura. Okay, let's get one thing straight. Don't speak.
Counsel Galanese, if you would like to speak again, we're going to let everybody have communication here. And we're going to take turns. Counsel Pruitt.
I had a point of clarification, Frank. Would you say that we should, we should, you know, have a thicker skin? Are you talking about 100% or you're just, I, I was thinking just within, within council members. If somebody in the community wants to, you know, say whatever they want to on Facebook or the newspaper, whatever, that's up to them. But I, how, how do you feel about the difference? Do you see a difference? I mean, there's a, the council and the community.
I, I do see, I do see a difference in some respect. But you know, I, I, I can go on and say that I had death threats given to me for weeks on end and.
Who hasn't?
Well, back, back to the point though, Frank, please. I guess I would like to see that.
I was trying to speak until Frank interrupted me, but okay, this is how it goes.
And I stopped.
And then down talks, which were fine, but I was trying to make a point from before.
Counsel Salamandra, I stopped Counsel Galanese from talking.
And I still.
The next in line was Counsel Pruitt. Counsel Pruitt asked Counsel Galan.
Interrupted me and I didn't get to finish. You told him to stop.
You weren't finished?
No. I was going to talk about the difference between personal and private and council, but it's fine. I'll get back on stack.
Counsel Pruitt asked Counsel Galanese a question. Did you get your question answered?
Not really, but uh.
Could you repeat, could you repeat, could you repeat the question for me? It's a little difficult for me to hear you.
I have two questions for you, but the first one was the point of clarification. Uh, I'm concerned about counselors, uh, you know, denigrating other counselors or the mayor or city managers or in other words, part of our collegial group. If they, you have something bad to say about what of us say at the council, don't do it on social media. Now, if the public wants to say something bad about us, you know, so what? I mean, that's, yeah, you're right. We have to take our lumps. You know, stiffen up. So that's really what I was asking you to do. Would you, you look at there, there being a difference between our communication between ourselves and council and city management uh, versus the, the city or do you look at it, no matter who said it? The council ought to be able to leave the council, go out and get on Facebook and, and say things, whatever you, you feel their opinions about other members are.
I, I agree with what you just said. It should, we, again, it goes back to the rules of order and ethics. We should respect one another when, when. I'm, I'm not saying respect one another. I'm saying not. What do I want to say? Muddy, muddy someone.
And the other, other, I, I originally had my hand up before Laura, but I, I, is anybody in here think that uh, because you brought it up for over a year now that we had to stick to the, you know, the, the rules of order. Does anyone think that just telling us to do that again is really going to solve the matter? We haven't done it yet, time and time again. And, and you've admitted yourself, Mary, you don't have the authority to fire us. It's not work. You know, so I mean, really you don't have the tools. I was going to propose trying to put some tools in your hand. That's what I was going to do because I don't think we're policeable. I don't see us sticking together long enough. Ken used a word that I really liked. He said the word collegial. I haven't heard that in so long, I couldn't believe it. But I think we're supposed to be a collegial group. That's why I didn't censure Frank. I didn't censure Laura. No matter what, because I looked at us being a group. I, if I was a football coach, I would say my team sucks. They're the worst team I've had in years and they're going to go down in history as the worst. What's that mean about me? That's a pretty poor reflection on me as a coach, if I haven't done a good job with the football team. It's the same with us. If we go out and I say, Laura, you know, smells bad or something like that. I had some sort of horrible thing against her. That's, that's a real bad reflection on me. And don't we have any self-respect? As a group, I feel like we constantly undermine each other. I even think our attorney was doing it earlier. And, and so we should just not go outside of council and have comments on each other. We have comments on policies, on issues, not people, that's fine, but not on, not on each other. Cut that out. Now, if you want to do it after you're out of office, I don't intend to ever block that, but you can comment on that. So after office, if you want to say something about someone else, feel free. But uh, but if you agree, you know, rather than just look at it, you gotta say yes, I agree or disagree, it becomes a rule. But I would say leave each other alone. Don't, don't denigrate each other's character or personality.
That's all I was trying to say. And you know, I, I think Counsel Galanese, when you said if, if you get, you're, you're not supposed to be hurt or you're, you bring it on yourself, but you know, these comments, I mean, things outside of count, I mean, people, it's one thing to comment on someone's ideas or opinions, that is fine. We, we should all be doing that. That's how we work together. I don't know how it promotes us working together. Have somebody online saying, you know, terrible things about each other. And it happens all the time. Whether you're on social media or not, it gets sent to you. That's what happens to me. I am on social media, but not to the point where I see all these things. And there's some, there's some more private websites where a lot of this gets spoken and it's out in the community and I don't think it helps us as a group to work together. It's hard to swallow. I can then sit here and pretend I didn't hear it. I'm sorry, John. Go ahead.
I appreciate it.
Slant myself for you.
And I know you want to say something. I just want to make sure that other counselors get an opportunity if they want to voice an opinion on the discussions taking place.
I think what, I think what we're talking about here is, is libel and slander. Okay, so slander is the spoken word and libel is the written word. Okay, where, we, you can criticize actions and decisions, but you're not criticizing the person behind the actions and decisions. And I believe that's what Counsel Pruitt and Counsel Regan are referring to. So you can be, you can be against someone's vote. You can be, you can be against someone's public actions or private actions, but that, but it's not a point of being against the person. And, and I think that's, I think that's really a, a lot of what we have happening here. So in, in quite frankly, um, I, I really don't think it has anything to do with being an elected official or not. It's about being a good human being. So if you, if you want to be libelous or slanderous, uh, you know, against an individual, I mean, that's probably something that should be done in your kitchen. All right, regardless of whether you were voted into public office. I, I might be sounding like a prude or something, but it's, it's really the truth about being a decent human being. So I really don't see that it has anything to do with being an elected official. So if, if you wanted, if you're, you know, I'll go back to libel and slander. If you want to be libelous and slanderous, you know, do it, do it with your partner in the car or do it, you know, in your kitchen. You know, you don't have to do it on social media or, or out in the full public somewhere. So you know, no space is safe except for your private atmosphere, whatever that atmosphere is. So I, I think it's, I think it's important to, you know, to respect the human and you, and you can disagree with the actions.
I, I think about the US Supreme Court. It, you know, they're in the democratic process and they might get five judges or perhaps six or nine, who knows? But whatever the, the rule is, whatever they come up with, whatever the vote, the democratic vote comes down to, the rest of them support it. Uh, and that's what we have to do as a collegial group. We can't keep fighting among ourselves. We can't decide to change a law or legislation after it occurs. And I really want to say, I know that there's a, a them and us in your, where it's considered that there's the lefties and righties. I am not either. I, I want to tell you, although I've been accused of being in a group, I'm not. I, I, I'm socially liberal and fiscally conservative and I don't have any party affiliation. So really, it's not a matter of me choosing sides. It's a matter of the, the issue. It's the, it's the issue that's, and that's the way it ought to be for everyone. And then once something is decided, if, if it's something I really don't like, I promise you, I want to follow behind and try to support as best I can because we're a group. We're not, you don't have the leg fighting with the arm or the eye fighting with the toe. We either have to come together as a group to get things done, or we're not going to get anything more done than we did in the last year and a half. And I have to say, I don't think we've done a wonderful job. We could have gotten a lot more done and everybody's going to say COVID. I think that would have been a prime time to get even more done. Could have done more planning. We could have really had some good brainstorming, come up with some great ideas. Instead, we've been wasting time. And I, I really think everybody has been said has a great heart here. And really, I was reflecting back and wanted to go through, what got you into this? Do you feel fulfilled? I don't. I, 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 my whole life's changed. My privacy's gone. I think my reputation suffered. It's been expensive. It's have been time consuming. It takes away from even more pleasant activities that I could be doing. Family Matters, me right across the board. And what do you get for it? Everybody aggravated at you. Uh, not much progress. I, I, I've never been in a situation like this and I'm not sure how to change it. I don't think it's within our capability to change. I was going to look for an outside adjudicator. I thought maybe the ethics committee uh, or some judge, if you will, outside of us, this should maybe help adjudicate the rules that we ourselves come up with. Because it's not fair to put it all on your shoulder either. That's not comfortable. You have to brighten everybody every meeting. Wouldn't it be nice if you could sidestep that? Wouldn't it be nice if?
Can't see my smile.
Well, I can imagine. I, I wouldn't like it. But if you're at work and, and you have trouble with your employees, you got to do something about it. Here, we don't have the rules to make it work. We're not following the rules. If we were, if we were employees, we'd have been fired by now. Uh, so I, I have to say, please review, what got you into this? What did you want to get accomplished? What did you, is it a personal issue? You just want to promote yourself or is it issues or if it's activism or I don't know, whatever it is, you, you know, why is it? What, what, what do you get out of this? But you know, what do you respect in yourself that you try to put forward? But you know, what do you respect in yourself that you try to put forward? And I think if you look at that again and start as you did a year and a half ago, maybe we can refocus on trying to do the right thing. Just saying, let's go by the rules of order. It hasn't worked so far. One of the things I have in here is we have a so-called college of knowledge where we go through the rules of order. I bet right now, if we had a test to ask people to write it down, I bet half of us would fail.
I have my cheat sheet. I have my cheat sheet.
Well, at least one of us would win. But I really, we have to do more than just hope that we're going to follow the rules of orders that we don't even know. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're okay? Cause I have Counselor Camer. Oh, Counselor Peeler, Counselor Camer, Counselor Salamandra. He hasn't spoken yet. I'm just trying to spread the wealth.
I said I was on stack a long time ago.
You can have it. I'm, I'm, I'm going to say what I'm going to say.
Counselor Salamandra. Counselor Peeler is, is giving you the floor.
We are acting as if all of us are on social media doing this and that is not true. And so it is hard for me to sit in a room where we don't tell the truth about what's happening here. Counselor Peeler, Counselor Galanese are on social media talking terribly about some of us. Counselor Noon does it in meetings. How are we expected to go on when we hear the same thing from the mayor, follow the rules of order? What are you going to do about stopping it? That is the question because we've had this conversation several times and we're still at the same place. And every meeting I come with a fresh sense. I'm going to wait my turn. I get cut off, interrupted. It's like someone can cut me off and then there's a whole conversation between two people cutting me off. And I just stay here and it happens frequently. And if you're not seeing it, I don't know what a code word I can tell to you all is to say that this is getting out of hand. That there be, this all started when I didn't want to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And the paper asked you all comments on my opinions and that is not your business. I'm still going to go, when we talk about what is going to happen in meetings and out, I am still going to go to protests. I'm an activist and an organizer. That if you disagree with the ideals that I'm fighting for, that doesn't mean that you can go on the internet and say that all these things. And so I want to know what is actually going to happen when it's done. Because it's not that it's happening on both sides. It's one side.
What do you think on that?
Please.
I'm sorry.
So is that question directed at me, Counselor Salamandra? And you're asking me what I'm going to do about any counselor that would go on social media? You, you named two of them. They would go on social media and say something negative about you? Is that?
I'm not saying you can say negatively about me. So if you disagree with chickens or the marina, I can say, I disagree. I think that Counselor so-and-so has it wrong on chickens. Here's the reason why. But when they say things like, we must actively get her out of her, our city because she goes to a protest. That, um, it's not, it's never going to be a collegial experience for me here because of everything that's been said. And I don't talk about you all personally, except unless it's to your face.
So you, please clarify your question to me so I can answer. Is it about doing something about counselors that say things on social media or is it about something that happens in a meeting?
What I'm asking for is that it not be a dismissive thing each time that we all must stop it. Because some of us aren't doing it.
So I can respond to what I have some level of control about, which is very minimal.
Okay.
That's at a meeting, trying to control the meeting to a point that we all are professional. And I can do my best to try to stop interruptions, follow the rules of order procedure. That's, that's my focus at a meeting. When it comes to social media or outside something in this media, I have no ability to stop anybody from getting on a website, from getting on any one of the social medias and doing anything that's, that's disrespectful, harmful. The, and Counselor, and I, I will, when I get a chance, I will talk on my piece. I just try and answer your question. But I don't have the ability to stop that from happening. So that's my answer to your question.
Can I ask you a follow up?
Sure.
Do you understand how it seems when you do try to police some of us and not the others? And then if you can't do anything about it, then I would, I think it seems it changes the public's opinion when some of us are being yelled at by you as if there's something you can do. And then you don't acknowledge the other things that are wrong because there's nothing you can do. You see what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
I, I totally understand what you're saying. And on Zoom, for me to call order, and that's really what it comes down to. For me to call order and drive this council back to the rules of order so that we all take turns, so we all don't abuse the rules of order procedure, but we follow them and be respectful. That's my task. I have learned that, and this is something that's happened in one of my previous councils, that a call to order in person is, is fairly easy to do, but I've seen it not work at different council meetings. There is an option that I will use in the future and I will call for a five-minute recess. I will stop the meeting and call for a five-minute recess until this group can be respectful, come back to the table and act appropriately. So that, that's me learning as I go along. Counselor Peeler, Counselor Camer.
I don't know how productive this conversation is without having a authentic team building exercise where communication is authentically put on the floor. Something like Myers-Briggs training where personality engineering gets involved. And that's usually something that an organization like this does, like in our first retreat. And we didn't, we didn't have that opportunity and I don't know how effective it's going to be now, late in the game. Um, that is, I've experienced those types of trainings multiple times in multiple organizations and that usually sets the tone for how you can communicate with other people. Aside from that, I don't know if the philosophical topic or philosophical argument that's on the floor is the difference between terrible things and terrible opinions of people. And then when we start policing opinions of people, we're getting into a slippery slope. And I don't, I don't advocate for that type of censoring of people. It's just slippery. And I don't know if there has been a clear definition between saying or thinking something terrible about someone's opinion or position as opposed to thinking something terrible or opinionated about them as an individual. And, and that's a philosophical question. And often it comes down to what you don't like personally and what makes you feel uncomfortable when conceptualizing it. And I don't want to get into the thicker skin conversation, but it's usually that philosophical question that will help you kind of get through that situation. And those are often put on the table during those Myers-Briggs trainings that you can get when you kind of put personalities on the table and then learn to communicate with certain personalities. Right? I'm a visual learner. I'm a, I'm a, you know, I've, I've done Myers-Briggs. I'm an inspirational thinker. It's like all these things that are, that are part of it. So I, I think this type of conversation might be better off tabled until we can produce a framework of how we can get through it. And I'd like to, I mean, I don't want to table it, but I'd like.
Well, there's, this is, this is just a word choice. There's no motion.
I don't know if we have the, we have the framework to build through it, other than like, this reminds me of like an episode of Seinfeld where it's like, this is, this is the Festivus where we're airing of the grievances. You know what I mean? Which is I guess part of that, that, that holiday. But, uh, I don't know if we have the framework before us to get through this productively.
Counselor Camer.
I am. I think we just, I think we're going to have to have this conversation, you know, just accept that we're going to have to have this conversation on a going basis. If we're, if we keep coming up with all these, you know, do's and don'ts and all this other stuff, I don't think that we've got the time. And, you know, or the capacity to do it. Um, I really don't. I think, you know, we just got to focus on the ideas, focus on the data, focus on that. Um, I will say, Frank, I think you, you, you said that the bar's been moved and the bar was in one place. I was listening to what you were saying and I, I almost felt like you came back around in a circle. And when you said that the bar was in two different places, I mean, again, it comes to scale, you know, where do we lie on a scale? Okay. Um, I think you've defined one end of the scale in terms of what you said publicly. Because it had a tangible effect, at least on me, which was I don't feel safe anymore. And I never felt that way until that comment was made. So am I going to feel safer now? I, I mean, you know, because we're going to put in some rules or anything? Screw it, you know? We, what we have to do is we got to get the people's business done. Okay? Every once in a while, John's, one of some of John's ideas and things like that, we're going to have to resort to or, or, or something. But I don't, I personally don't have the capacity to go through a, a Myers-Briggs, uh, you know, thing or, or anything else. I, I, you call a meeting to order, we can have this conversation. We should just put a time limit on it. We can have this conversation at the next council meeting for 15 minutes if, if it's needed and we need to. You know, it's sort of like you, um, what do you, you, you clear the air and we get on with it and let's get on to the, you know, this thing that. We've got to make decisions based on data. Okay. That's it. Data. And, um, uh, we have got some serious projects to drag across the finish line. And we've had some impediments over the last year that have made it harder. I don't personally want to see our attorney, if it's still Amel Bovee, anywhere around us. We need people to help us get to the finish line on police stuff, legion stuff. We got this, we got a, a zoning process. It's scaring people all around town. We've got to address those worries. Let's just focus on that. Let's focus on that. And I, I still want to move the damn railroad. Those are things that are, that's good work that we can all work on. And we have a lake to take care of, which by the way, half the communities on the lake, they don't look at themselves as lakeside communities that we all have something to, to do for the lake. It's like, hey, get my money where I can. If I can find some coal or some, something and mine the crap out of it lakeside, I'll just go ahead and do it. But we, we've got to do that. We've got serious projects and I think we've got to pull them across the finish line. And we'll, and the taxpayers won't give a damn about our arguments if we increase the tax base and we unleash development in this town. I said it a long time ago. We got to grow out of our problems. We, there's no more cutting of anything. We're not even taking care of our flowers around town.
Hey, also.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Counselor Salamandra, I'm going to let you go. I would like to put myself in queue somewhere, so I'll be after Counselor Salamandra.
Um, I am also not interested in having this conversation again. We've been to the Gandhi Institute. We're having it here. And I don't, also don't have the capacity for Myers-Briggs. I would like to see, um, the mayor enforce the rules more fairly. And another way, I appreciate you coming up with the idea for a five-minute break. And I also would like to ask you that when we're going back and forth to call the vote. Because a lot of times it's, it's not in a productive way. Our minds are made up and we're just arguing or one side is attacking the other side. And so I would like to see us move in a direction that does the people's business by sticking to the issues and by calling the vote.
So one thing I've learned in my 60, almost 61 years on this planet is that if you want to create change, you have to want to create change. And, um, I'm not sure I'm hearing that across the board. So, and that's okay. I'm perfectly okay with it. Counselor Pruitt said some things that I really key off of and I appreciate. Um, one thing that I, I will have a little bit of aversion is when we have a vote and the vote's five, four, six, three, it doesn't matter. I'm not asking everybody to get on board with that vote. I'm asking you that if you don't support it, you accept the results. The results are the results. You don't have to wave the banner and get on the bandwagon, but you do have to accept the results of the vote. And, and if you look at all our rules of order procedure and the ordinance, you will find that when a vote's made, a vote is made. And we talked about being on the prevailing side, non-pervailing side, how all that works. It is what it is. So have the discussion, have the disagreement. Call the vote when it's needed to call the vote. Live with the vote when it's done. Try to keep the emotions under control. The other, and, and I appreciate your consideration of me in this position because I never pictured myself in this position as far as what we've gone through in the last 15 months. But I feel comfortable that I've, I've grown and learned. And that's why I'm going back to the basics. I keep these documents. I review these documents frequently to keep myself in check. And I hope that each one of you also does that. Because I can, and, and I'm, I always try to say I'm going to be open-minded. Counselor Pruitt, if you've got a better way to skin this cat, I would love to hear it because I'd be open to it. And I don't care what it is. Counselor Peeler mentioned. I don't care what it is. I would love for us all to, to move more effectively forward as a council. But I don't know what the answer is there. That's why I've always related back to the basics. And I have an expectation. Everybody that voted for you has an expectation that you come to the table with a mature attitude, you act respectful and you move the city forward. City manager asked us some questions. It's the why, you know, why are you here? Why do you want to move the city forward? Why do you want what you want? Whatever it is that you want to accomplish in your tenure on council. Counselor Pruitt just reminded us of that, which I think is key. I know why I'm here. I know why I've been doing this for a while. And I'm, and I'm definitely not always right, but I think the interest of each one of us is to make the place we live a better place. We've been doing this for 46 minutes now. Um, I'd like to move on to the next topic. I don't think we're going to solve this communication issue tonight. Counsel, Counselor Pruitt?
I would like a closing comment.
Please, please take it.
Well, whenever you're ready.
No, nothing. I mean, is, is, if everybody's okay moving on, I want Counselor Pruitt to have a closing statement, please.
I'd like to, to pass out, the way we, one of this really when I asked for time at this meeting was that we have to handle this problem and that everybody should come back with some ideas and I've heard some ideas. I put a presentation together and you'd asked, I want you to lead off or did you want me to lead off? I asked you to do so, but it, it, it sort of means that the presentation's not going to be as valuable as I would like to, to, as. There's a different approach in here. And really what it's going to come down to is I support what you're saying. I think we have to have more structure to what we're doing. This provides an opportunity for structure and to put tools in your hands and take a bit of the monkey on your back. And it is not refined. In other words, this is looking for, this is a general overview to see if people would buy into it. And what it would take is getting together in a sort of a subcommittee and put together what I think is similar to the, the body camera policy. Anthony, you did a good job coordinating that between everybody. And remember, everybody had input, including the chief. We came up with a pretty good draft. I think we can do the same thing in terms of our own rules. We're not following the rules. And the final point I'd like to say is we need skin in the game for us. The reason people aren't abiding by this is because what, what's the harm?
You know? Can I ask, can't we just read this for four minutes and then go around? So that we can get this.
Back 20 minutes to 30 minutes to really go through all these.
No, I know that, but let us all go around and read, just read it for two or three minutes. It's not going to take long. And then you, let's go back to you and just lead us through a little bit.
Well, I don't think we want to spend that much time. I know the mayor said, if you want to read through this, I'd be happy to come back again. You want it up there, John? What, what you saying? That's what, yeah, that's what I just passed out, but it's my understanding. We've got other things to do tonight. I don't want to spend the time, but I don't think we really have the time right now. Be happy to get back together in a separate session if you'd like.
Uh, well, listen, I, as, as been mentioned, maybe is, is to kind of reapproach the topic. What I'd like to do is put this on the agenda for our June work session. So you get time to review it. You get time to think about it. And at the June session, let's make that our number one review of, of your efforts.
Okay. Then the only thing I can say is that these are bullet points. It takes some discussion to make some of those points understandable. So if anybody has questions, send me a text or something.
Thank you very much, Professor.
Thank you.
We just have legal do some, um, investigation into this because just at first glance, it just doesn't seem like any of these punishments are legal.
We can have that discussion.
Well, before the June, I'm just saying, before that meeting, we don't need to have the discussion now, but I'd like to know what legal thinks about any kind of ticketing, uh, muting, taking us out of meetings, suspending, suspension. Because I, I just would like to have that.
And it is purely discussion because I haven't read it, but anything in here could cause us to say, hey, let's change, uh, one of our rules of order procedure. Or let's change the ordinance or let's, let's change something. I'm not sure what it would be. I'm not sure what it would be. So it might not be applicable currently, but it might be something we could implement as we move forward. And I, and I don't know that without looking at it.
There's a different rule if we're going to do the same thing.
As, as we talked about, you know, we talked about the ethics and maybe changes some of the ethics. Talked about rules of order. I've been on council long enough that we've changed the rules of order procedure. And I could thank Counselor DeCassano and Counselor Augustine for actually implementing this. Counselor Galnazian, I see you now.
Counselor Pruitt, could you email that to me, please?
I think, I can't, our assistant city manager is going to do it right now.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Deep breath, move on.
Yep, I think this was worthwhile.
Yeah, me too. It's always good.
And, and we experienced a great thing. We, we, uh, for, for the most part, everyone got to finish their say today. There was, there was very little interruption. So I think we just need to keep our eye on the ball there. And, and I agree with Counselor Camera, I'm in it for the same thing. I, I want to dive into something and get things done. And, and, and stop the criticizing of the individual like I already mentioned. And I hope we never have to go into a five minute recess.
Me too.
I hope we never have to do that.
Me too.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we're going to talk about the compost, compost facility to include trash and recycling in a code change conversation. And I'm going to ask Counselor Regan to lead that.
Thank you, yes. I, I, but I first have to thank you, John, for that. And I want to reiterate two things that I loved about the conversation, as long as I have the floor, you know? One is, is your, your thought about going back to why we're all here. I love that. And the other is Counselor Burrow reminding us that it's not just counselors, but it's human beings who have to treat each other with a little bit more respect and kindness. And I think both of those would carry us far. So with that being said, um, uh, most of you are familiar with, uh, uh, new resource recovery park, which is being run by closed loop systems. Most people just say Jacob Fox, who was really the one, um, you know, managing this, this project. Right now it is, it, it's taking organic waste only. The vision that probably most of us are, are familiar with includes much more depth, includes recyclables and eventually, um, even trash, so that it's kind of a one stop shop for your garbage. Um, you may not be familiar with that latter one, that trash is on it, but it has been on his, you know, kind of picture from the start. So, um, all of this is wonderful and I think it all helps build a local company because it is a company. Um, and, and builds a model that can be used in other communities, uh, which is his intention and headquartered in Geneva. It also helps us, um, control our, our waste better and, and truly help keep things from the landfill. But we have run into an issue in that, um, the zoning laws on, um, trash and on how garbage or whatever you want to call it, refuge is, is kept, is under, under certain zoning, um, components that make this now problematic to move from the organic to accepting the recyclables. And then even further going down to accepting trash. So all we're looking for tonight is just a, a nod of heads that people are willing, um, to allow legal to pursue this, to just name the best routes, how we can get this zone quickly so that this business model can kick in and it can become really what we, um, what, what they intended and what I think we all would like, love to see, which is a facility that's a better, able to control our waste as a community. I will add just one other component that not everybody probably is aware of, but, um, also the closed loop eventually would like, I, you know, I mean, I know this, but, um, you know, that they, they would like also to be haulers and to actually pick up, e- even if it's just the, the recyclables, but it could become a waste hauler. And again, that's like a separate zoning thing. So, uh, because right now we have, uh, in our zoning regulations, we have four haulers named as official city haulers. We would either have to, you know, cite one as the official Geneva one and leave it to them or add one or whatever. But I, I guess all I'm asking with this is if, first if you have any questions, but also just a nod of heads, whether people are willing to let legal pursue it, it will come before us as a zoning change, which we will go on.
So just a frame, I'm going to reminisce for a half a second. I remember Burning Barrel in my parents' backyard. I remember real close to you in back of Tars, was kind of a dump site and there was another one out on, um, Preambles Street. So, uh, you know, it was all over the place. So I'm, I'm in favor of investigating it only because when we look at Seneca Meadows and Ontario County landfill and the closure coming, we really have to have a plan. So I think it's important to investigate every avenue. So I, I'm definitely willing to look ahead to landfill closures and how we're going to handle things moving forward, definitely. Counselor Burrow?
So is this about putting a transfer station in the zoning? It's not about a landfill in the zoning, this is a transfer station.
Right, it's not about a landfill, it's about, about a transfer station.
Right, so all, all, all we're doing is collecting stuff and transferring it.
Right, and, and right now the zoning would not permit that to be held there and.
So we, so we need to get the ball rolling to our consultants, right? That are doing the zoning right now.
It's not zoning, it's just, it's a code amendment. A code, I'm sorry, code amendment to allow that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's really just, and, and what we're asking for is for, um, them to find the most efficient way to do it, the simplest way. And because, you know, I, I, I don't think it's that complicated. It's just a matter of, um, getting it so that it's, it's allowed within our, our, our city code.
It, it's certainly not complicated. The town has had a transfer station for several decades. So, and we can pretty much just look at what's in their code and, and bang, slide it in, I would imagine. I'm finished.
I have Counselor Noon, Counselor Pruitt, Counselor, I know, I'm going to go around the horn, Counselor Peeler and Counselor Cameron.
Is it possible to have Joe and Jacob come and do a discussion, a presentation with us on this issue? I know Joe's voice and concerns about having it ultimately turning into a transfer station. So I think it'd be great if he could come and talk to us about pros and cons. Jacob come and talk to us about pros and cons before we jump the gun and just change zoning, but maybe deepen our understanding a little bit more of, uh, what's going on and how Jacob sees things moving forward, the potential timeline. And then, um, obviously getting the city's, you know, input from particularly Joe and Newey about some pros and cons about ultimately moving into phase three over time. Would it be possible to do that before we?
Maybe we could combine it if we could add this to also the June work session, but have legal start to come up with options so that it's, we're not just waiting another month. And we could kind of have all pre-planned it. Sure.
Sounds good. Counselor Pruitt?
Well, actually, I had a couple, two questions. Number one, when you say transfer, were they transferring the stuff to?
Um, yeah.
The town has containers back there and it's just picked up by a private hauler, but they're the collector of it. And then, and then it's sorted and it's put into whatever roll off or bin that it goes into. And all, all it is is the holding tank or the transfer station.
It, it, but then you mean it remains there?
No, it's to me.
No, it, it does not remain there. It, it, it gets tossed into a roll off and then the hauler hauls it away, no different than if they were going to your.
Regular place.
Right, recycling center, landfill.
We're trying to alleviate, you know, Casella, let's say, their landfill. What's the difference if we take it to, you know, to their drop it off and bring it to.
No, there isn't, there, the, the, we're not, forget about Casella for a minute. It's just, it's the idea of convenience. You go to the town lawn, you can bring your entire spectrum of refuges. You can go, oh, the recycling's going there, this is going there, this is going there, the mattress is going there. That's, that's the idea behind permitting this transfer station to be that. There's actually a technical.
But I'm just curious, even though they, when they get the stuff that goes somewhere, it doesn't really stop the landfills from getting forward.
No, 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 it doesn't. No, it's all, all it's doing is it's a service we're providing to our residents.
I see. And then the other question is, uh, you know, I, I've had people stop by my house and say it smells over there already. And I realize, we'll say it doesn't. But I've had one person stop by today. And I've mentioned also that I had a couple of people stop by and one person called about not being able to get into stuff, their leaves and things. And that's unusual for people to drop by my house. I don't really like it with that. That implies to me that there was, you know, you know, upset about it. And so, uh, I, I, the way I look at it, and I like Jacob and I like the addition in there, but I'd like to see him really get, get this done well and operating properly before he moves on to something else. So what's the timeframe for this, Jen?
I know, but what you're, you're referencing now is an issue, we, uh, the hours, uh, because it's just Wednesday and Saturday. I think people are accustomed to having more access to the place. Um, all, all I know from him is he's anxious to get started. He would start tomorrow if, if he, if he could. He's got like, um, you know, arrangements to pick up, like this is the food waste from, from, um, companies in the, in, um, Geneva. You know, the hospital, the colleges and so forth. And, um, and that was a little bit tricky trying to get away from the hall. He's anxious to move forward. So, you know, your question about the landfill, I, you know, like I know like mattresses, he knows it, places it, does it, you know, does it the right way and it doesn't just go into the landfill. Uh, so, you know, that's a good question to get more information on exactly how he would be handling the recycled materials.
Scuttlebutt is that, uh, that Nardozis are pushing because they have the money involved. And I think it's, I think he's loading, I think he's good, everything he's going to do, but I think he's loading it on too fast. Get good at what you're doing before you take your next step. That's be my only point. So I don't, maybe you could talk to him about his timing.
Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I think really what, what we're asking for tonight is just, it's not so much a vote to say, oh yes, we're all in and let's see this happen. It's more in, for the sake of timeliness to, to get a sense of what we would have to do for legal to make it go forward so that if there is agreement when that happens, you know, when we know the path, um, we'll be ready to make that move.
And I think Counselor Noon's request for more information is valid, both from the, um, Jacob and from the city. Counselor Peeler?
Counselor Noon, almost verbatim, brought up the exact same thing I wanted. I wanted to hear from our staff on this topic. They're the experts, they've got the longest history in this and they've got skin in the game here. Um, I also was, I'm not, I'm just kind of through organic process, no pun intended. Uh, where, where was our old transfer station? Same place.
Was there?
We've always had the debris.
Remember, we never had one. But back when Geneva had municipal garbage, we never had a transfer station.
It was done by ANC. That's a good call. It was done by a hauler.
Right.
Okay.
But it was, there was just, uh, uh, garbage, garbage. It was just food scraps. Right, it was completely separate from your own hauler, I believe. This is back in the 60s, I believe.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah.
And there was trash. You could bring trash and recycles and yard debris down to our transfer station at one point in time.
That's, but that's off the table.
Yes. Right now it's a yard debris.
Thank you.
I have a Counselor Peeler, Counselor Camera, Counselor Solomon and Counselor Burrow. Oh, Counselor Galnazian. I'm sorry. I have a tough time.
So you can go next or?
Yeah, go ahead and if we can sneak in Counselor Galnazian, because he's probably been raising his hand since the beginning.
I just, I just thank you very much, whoever gave up their time. Um, I did have my hand up. Um, this question is versaged now that we started talking about this. This was something I wanted to ask in the past. Could you make me understand how it is that, um, the vermiculture in the city, how, what is our, what is the city's skin in the game with that? What? The reason why I'm asking that is because I've been told by several people that, um, I don't know if it's Jacob Fox himself, or I don't know how many workers he has down there, but they're using the city's loader. And when they said that to me, I know from working in construction, you know, is, is he on our insurance policy to be able to operate that loader if something was to happen?
Your hand, thank you.
Would you like Counselor Cameron to answer?
You know, whoever, I mean, it's.
You asked the city manager a question, so I'm just looking for a response.
I know, do you know about this currently using the loader?
Yes, it's in the.
It's in the contract, correct?
It's currently in the.
I know the answer to the question.
Adam has it in the contract.
I was just going to say, it's in the agreement that we have with them that.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed to know. I just, somebody could ask me and I had.
It's covered, yeah.
Okay.
Officer?
Yeah, that was simple.
Counselor Cameron, Counselor Solomon or Counselor Burrow?
Um, I, I visit the, uh, the, uh, transfer station almost every week. And, um, part of the reason is that I go back a long way with this vermiculture thing. This was a creature of the Green Committee starting at least four years ago. Okay? The vermiculture idea was floating around and people were all interested in it. And that was when Ontario County was starting to look for, I'm just going to give you the history. Look for proposals for transfer stations or whatever with extra landfill money. And one of the things that we did was we, I think it was a hundred thousand was our first hit. Uh, it was a serious number of dollars and it was, we wanted to do the vermiculture, the Green Committee. We, we were very interested in that. And because it was unique and distinctive and because that's where all the smell is. So we went after that and we got to 110 or whatever the hell it was. I can't remember the numbers exactly. Um, we had, we had people visit us and everything from the county and everything. We said what we wanted to do and we were blessed to get the money. And we got subsequent ones and then Jacob started to weigh in and he pursued it and got more. Um, the whole idea though was to show the rest of municipalities around New York State, that if you take food waste out of the waste stream, you can compost it in your own community and reuse it and it pays for itself. We're proving the concept and that's the whole idea. Because if, if we're stuck with SMI until 2025, this one until 2028, um, we've got, we've got a smell problem until those times. Now, they're in, concurrently, and the Geneva Green Committee pursued this, we have participated strenuously in the beyond, beyond waste 20, whatever, 30 plan. The whole idea was to impact the, the New York State DEC to rewrite, when they're rewriting their plan, which is supposed to be out by now, but will be out in the next month or so. I've communicated with Dave Vitale, who's the Director of Solid Waste for New York State, and we're, we're begging him and we're going to have to weigh in as a city council. We want them, and they've already started in New York State to say, if you generate more than a certain tonnage, I don't know whether it's 25 tons a week or whatever, you have to compost it within a certain number of miles of where it's generating. So if we can push that down so that everywhere in New York State where you generate food waste, you have to compost it, all those trucks that are carrying 35% of the waste stream, they're going to be a lot fewer, 35% less, and the smells are not going to be bad. Okay, so that's the background. That's why we're doing this. So I, so all that being said, I'm really grateful for Jason and, or Jacob and all this stuff, but I don't want him pushing the agenda. Fact is, is the unique thing we're doing is we're composting food waste. We don't need to have everything else down there, okay? There is a problem with the convenience because all of a sudden our leaf thing is two days a week and it was five before. People are pissed off and I don't blame them. But our DPW is way understaffed and it just, you know, it's difficult. So we're right now accepting leaves on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Now, in terms of what's going on now, they filled up, they've got the first trench full. Not full, but I mean the first layers in. And they've covered it with carbon. They got the leaves and the, you know, and the shredded paper and everything else. And I walked it the entire length and it didn't smell. Okay, and they're going to put another layer on top of it and then cover it again. And then that one's done. And I asked, how long's it going to take for this to, to cook and turn into compost? We're going to have to see, but hopefully those worms are going to work fast and with a little heat, a little water from the rain, maybe a month. Well, that other trench on the other side, I mean, it only took them two weeks to fill that trench up. So this thing is way undersized for what we're going to generate. So us filling it up with dumpsters and everything else to. So us filling it up with dumpsters and everything else to take bed springs and trash and mattresses and everything else, we should come up with an agreement with the town of Geneva. They got a lot of space and it's already a transfer station. Instead of driving over there, why don't we all work together as a city and the town, drive the stuff up there? The last part, the last part is, we may have to dig some more trenches. But there are communities that say, hell, those idiots in Geneva can do this, we can do it. We gotta play that card really hard. Because we can show them and we can take pictures of this and everything else. And by the way, the tractor that's out there that they're using to load and unload it, it's a Nardozzi vehicle. It's not a city vehicle. So whatever they're doing, and, and the two people that are sitting in the truck are non-city employees. They belong to either Jacob or Organics Hicks operation. So as long as we stay out of it, I don't think there's a liability that you're concerned about. Except for the facility liability.
If they need it, they have access to it when, if, if it's available from us.
Right.
That's not to say that they need it all the time. If they have their own equipment, they.
Right, and okay, but, but so they aren't necessarily gonna jump on a, a city vehicle and start driving and taking it. Nardozzi apparently is providing some equipment that they.
They can physically bring it over to the location if they request use.
Okay, so, so I just wanna say, I, I think Jan's, you know, this is a nice idea, but we have to ask ourselves some more questions. So I think what Councilor New said, let's get Joe over here and things like that, we should think about this. Okay, because the other thing that the Geneva Green Committee did four or five years ago, I have no idea, I can't remember these things. But we tried to take on the haulers and discipline the process. They were paying the city $250 a year for their license. You know, to operate here. So we raised it to a thousand and they went nuts. But they're driving the bus. We have got, and then we said, we want a recycling label on all the dumpsters and all the toders all over town. They still haven't put them on. They've been made, but they haven't done it. So before we put more, we gotta make them do what they promised to do. And the other thing is, they're circumventing. Our, they're the four people that have a license. But construction companies and contractors are bringing in their own roll-offs and we're throwing waste in them. And it's not the four licensees.
That's correct.
And so those four haulers actually have a reason to be pissed off at us. It's like, what the hell? You know, we paid our thousand and by the way, I think it's perfect, given the fact that they make a lot of money. A thousand is cheap. And we should probably raise it. And they'll, they'll bitch about it, but we should be raising it because, for a number of reasons, the city's broke and all that stuff. So that's my speech. I don't think we should turn it into a transfer station. We should work on agreement with the town of Geneva. So now the smell, I'm very concerned about. I have been there half a dozen times since, you know, it, it didn't have a lot of wasted it, six weeks ago. Now it's really cool. But I haven't smelled anything yet, but I, I'm, it's possible.
It could be facility, it might not even be.
Well, or it could be the landfill. So anyway, I, I, it depends where the wind's blowing.
Councilor Solomon?
Sorry for the long speech, but that's what I know.
Jan, I do support having legal look into this. To answer your question about how could it help? I think a lot of people in my neighborhood don't really have access to get to the transfer station in the town. And so a lot of times they end up throwing things away that are recyclable because they don't have a way to take it all in one haul. Or they get a dumpster and throw it out. And a lot of times we see landlords being frustrated by the amount of stuff left behind. I think that all has to do with being unable to access a place to take your stuff. And so I think a transfer station, although it doesn't really excite me down there, would be, it's like, like not my favorite idea, but I think it might be necessary, or at least working with the city or the town, a way to make that easier on people who lack transportation because we see so much garbage piling up here. And I think it's honestly just because people don't have a place to put it. I know that right now because I've just rented a dumpster. And, and so I do support it and happy to hear, hear more information, but if you're looking for directions, I can give you.
I have a summary of, or just like, I know.
I have Councilor Burrow.
My people are gone, yeah.
Councilor Burrow, Councilor Galanese.
Thank you. Does Jacob have a timeframe on when he wants to collect non-compostables?
As soon as he can.
I, I think that that's way, way too aggressive. Because, because the idea behind compost and vermiculture culture is to actually get the community in the habit of taking their compost, their compostables down there. It's not about for construction debris and things that you can't, that don't break down. So, you know, this was sold to us as a compost plan in vermiculture.
Right.
And, and, and it's gonna take, it's gonna take years to train the habits of human beings to do this for their own well-being. And, and I think wanting to get into the hauling business, you know, and to, and to get into picking up and distributing non-compostables, I think is, at this point, it's, it's self-defeating. Because we have to train everyone in the city to separate the stuff in their kitchen and take the compostables down there along with their, along with their yard debris. And, and things that are not compostable, we're not changing that right now.
And it's being done.
Yeah.
Recycling's being picked up.
Right, exactly. So, so I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about that. I, I, I think we should look at the code so we're ready.
Right.
So, so we're ready, there's no harm in doing that.
Right.
But I'm concerned about the overall effectiveness of composting when we don't have everyone or the majority of people on every street and they're changing their throwaway habits. Which is key. Compost, by the way, does not stink. Some people compost in their living rooms. It's not a joke. Some people have a piece of furniture in their living room where they put their compost or their dining room. It does not stink if it's, if it's taken care of properly. Putting a compostable material on this table is gonna smell because there's no substrate for it to break down. So putting a flower pot here with a bunch of eggshells and orange peels and, and leaves on top can sit right in a container right here and you will not smell it. If you put it on the table, you're gonna smell it. Because there isn't anything to break it down.
Looking before.
So, so no, I'm, I'm just saying, it's just a little, it's just a little compost education, but you know, it's, it has to be the way of the future. You've, you've heard me talk about this. And I'm, I'm so into the closed loop system, it's just an absolute must.
Right.
I'm, I'm not so anxious on a transfer station right now.
Councilor Galanese, Councilor Solomon, and then a summary please by Councilor Reagan.
Yeah, sure, just a segue, but yeah.
So I, I think that it's very important that we get Jacob Fox and Joe Vanoudy to talk to us about the needs, wants, and visions, especially Jacob Fox, to find the specifics of what, where he's going with this. And then after Ken had mentioned something that made me think of some things about the roll-offs. You know, other companies coming in here using roll-offs when we're strictly supposed to be using just the four that is in contract with the city. I feel that that is a problem amongst other problems that we're facing that I don't think that anyone wants to have the conversation of. And that is staffing. I feel that DPW's understaffed right now. Ken had mentioned flowers, you know. They're short-staffed. Code enforcement's not being enforced because they're short-staffed. All these things, we have these conversations of how we want Geneva to be and to look and to give the feeling of people when they, when they drive through it, but we don't have the manpower to do it. And I think that we need to have this discussion and I also believe that we need to have the discussion of the staffing of the police department. Because we're going down a very dangerous path. And you can maybe not think so now, but time is gonna tell. And I don't like the direction of the things that I'm seeing and hearing, because I'm keeping an eye on DPW, the police, and code enforcement. I keep on hearing a lot from a lot of residents about code enforcement. And, you know, I'm not pointing fingers, I just really honestly believe that we're short-staffed. That's my feeling and I think that we need to have the, the conversation about the police staffing and DPW sooner than later. I mean, grass is growing at a rapid, at a rapid pace right now. And I know that just in the cemetery, it takes four of those DPW workers to mow those lawns or to mow the cemetery and it takes days. And we keep getting the rain that we have. It's gonna be non-stop and they can't pull them off to go out and do other things. It's, it's a continuous thing there. And I know that we're down two prior to this year, just in buildings and grounds. And we need to really take a good, hard look at that now. I know that we're getting two part-timers for the summer, but I don't know that they could operate a lawn mower. I don't know what, what, what their scope of work is and what it entails or how many hours. But I think that with the DRI project right now, breaking ground or soon to be, there is gonna be some serious issues here and we need to nip this in the butt now. You know, sooner than later, because it, it's gonna be detrimental to the cosmetic looks of the city. And I think what every one of us wants is to be an attractive city. And, you know, is looking out your window in your yard, it rains and how fast the weeds and the grass grows and trash builds up. I know that we have a DPW guy that spends at least two to four hours every single day going down to the lakefront and elsewhere, the parks, just changing out trash. So that, that's taken away from the, the manpower of DPW as a whole. So I think that this conversation needs to be had. I'm not sure if we wanna do it in a work session, in a city council meeting, but it's something that I think that needs to be discussed ASAP.
Councilor Solomon, and then a wrap-up by Councilor Reagan.
I just wanted to say quickly to Tom's point about composting, that Blueprint Geneva does growing cycles and it has really changed. So many people in the city are now composting and seeing how easy it is. Getting the bins directly from them and having them pick it up really makes it so easy. And you really start to see the, how much less garbage you have. And so if you're interested in, in signing up for that program or learning more about compost, you could reach out to me or to Blueprint. And then Frank, Frank's comments. It's really hard for me, so I just wanna say, if, if we're going to have a conversation like this way, we were talking about the closed-loop system. It gets really hard then when we go into different things about staffing. So if Frank wants to talk about staffing, it would be really helpful if you just signed up for a work session and then did that. Rather than bringing it up in a different discussion and then we don't really have the time or attention. So if you're so interested in that, I would hope that you would sign up for the next work session.
Councilor Reagan, a summary please.
Yeah, I, I, I would add, Growing Cycle does bring their compost to our site, so that's a, a nice thing. Also, the, as far as the recycling goes, and I don't have the information, so I appreciate the, the idea of having Jacob here with Joe too, to see how the two weigh out together. My understanding is there are some new ideas in terms of the recycling and so forth, and even handling trash. And those are the kinds of things that Jacob would be able to present that I certainly can't. So I like the idea of having him come. I would also just add this, an underlying factor here in that this is in fact a business. And I would like to see us, as I think we have for companies like Real Eats and others in the city, go out of our way to help build a new company here that's gonna hire locally, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I believe that that's a commitment that Jacob has and Closed Loop has. So I, you know, that's another reason to me to support this. So I, I can understand the hesitancy and the feeling that he's moving too quickly. But I would appreciate the idea of allowing the code research to happen. And then perhaps at our next meeting, having Jacob and Joe present. And then, you know, if there's agreement that this is something to do, would be in a good, in good shape to pursue a code change that would allow it to, to happen. And, you know, at that point we can restrict, you know, say, oh, we're not ready until next year or we need a better plan or whatever is necessary to make it acceptable to people. But, you know, that, that's, that's what I'd ask. So I, I guess it's over to you to figure out.
No, 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 I think it's a slam dunk for Councilor New's suggestion to bring both Jacob and Joe to give us a better education on the process. And then the second part is to expend legal time and be able to look at the code and drive the change. I think, and I'm not sure, if you guys wanna raise your hand if you're supportive of that or if you want more information on how many hours that might take to do, because it's kind of an open-ended question for me.
Well, in terms of the code though, do you want to choose more than one location in case the first one doesn't work out? Like, in other words, I, I, I think I heard, like, maybe moving out to the town or to the edge of the city or?
Well, we want to be in charge of the code for the town, so.
Well, that's a similar place in the city that, it could be right across the street from the current vermiculture.
I, my understanding is he has a plan, you know, I mean, I've seen the drawings. I, I guess, I don't know, I guess maybe it can't be as general as that, but.
I don't see him having the room.
How about we get some more data and Sage, before we raise hands on the, the legal portion of it, can we just get a, a general number of hours that legal thinks it would take to take a look at the codes that are applicable to this situation?
Well, clearly though, it can't, there's not the room in the transfer station, so there must be some.
And I don't wanna speculate.
No, I, I mean, I want. But even before zoning, it's like, if you don't have the room there, where are you thinking of having the room?
And that's hopefully what will come forward with that next dialogue. Okay?
Okay, so we're leaving it then that we'll have a presentation?
Definitely. I'm looking forward to that.
Okay.
Work session, presentation?
I'm okay. I think it'll take enough time, so I'm okay with work.
Yeah.
I wanna get on the agenda for next work session soon.
So we did mention communications upfront and Sage, can you let us know if Jacob and Joe can be in our next work session?
And, and can you though make sure that, please don't, or at least for me, for me, I'd be concerned about you conveying that we want to expand. In other words, we want their impressions of, of what we think, think we should do. Okay, we know what Jacob, I mean, I, I don't want them to say, to be imagining, okay, we have to make a presentation because council wants us to expand the transfer station. We do not want them to come with a preconceived notion of what we think we wanna do.
I think Joe Vanoudy will come forward with a, a good viewpoint from the city's point of view. Councilor Galanese talked, and when we talked about next work session, Councilor Galanese talked about staffing. You want that on the next work session?
That should be in it.
Yeah, yes, I do. I, I'd like to, I'd like to really quickly, really quickly say that we're always putting the cart before the horse. Jacob Fox, I'm sure he has a vision of what he wants to do with the, the amount of space that he has. It's always good to think to future, but I think that's questions that he is able to answer. We're just speculating. And we do that an awful lot, is speculate when we have staff to rely on.
We're gonna get more information. So we're talking about next work session before we even go on to the last item on the agenda. But we are communication, I'm limited to 15 minutes, presentation if they're available. Staffing, Councilor Galanese, we're gonna focus on DPW.
I, I wanna focus on DPW, code enforcement, and the police department.
Not, that, no, not, can we slice it?
Yeah, then I'm gonna go with the police department right off the get-go then, because they are running short-staffed, overworking the police.
Explanation, I just wanna try to do an agenda.
Yes, yes.
Councilor Solomon, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I don't know if the council saw a communication from the housing subcommittee on establishing a local point of contact for rentals, but nobody responded. And so I'd like to be on the, if that's the soonest I can.
Topic is a central point for housing? Central contact for housing or housing in general?
Say it again?
Central contact for housing?
Yeah, like for the LLCs.
Properties, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So it will just be housing in general. I would, or you could all reply to that email before then. And I'll remove my.
I feel bad, okay, I feel bad because I, I don't have it here.
There was a lady, I forgot her name, sent in a letter stating.
Kim Rice.
That there's a lot of landlords that, I think 25% of the city's properties, people live outside the city. And if you have a code issue or something like that, who do you go to? The person living there or the landlord? It could be at a local contact. with already, already people know that, so.
And I was hoping to hear from you before, or I would have got on this work session, but then after I did it, it was too late, and now it's next month.
So councilors, if you can pick that email up and respond, that might save us some work.
Thanks.
Okay, last on our agenda, because I'm not going to entertain other discussions and topics, because we've got plenty going on, we're going to stick with the DRI Streetscape 520 Project Overview and Updates, which is exciting.
Yes, and I won't take a lot of time, but I wanted to just share with you all, what is this really going to kind of look like, is one of the reasons, because we went, Council Borough and I and BID members went out and walked the project site, and we picked a couple areas. And it came clear to me that, I've been living and breathing this, some councilors that have been a part of this, but it's still just this project out there without any specifics. And so all the issues, there's not enough public space, there's not enough private space, we're gaining lots of space, and a lot of those issues were cleared up. So I just wanted to share a couple slides, and Adam's going to screen share, because it is really exciting, and I wanted to connect it to the larger picture briefly. So just a couple. And I don't know if, can I use the mouse? Maybe so that if you're watching, can you see the mouse if you use it or not? Okay, nevermind. So.
You want this thing?
Okay, so just showing you, 520 project is going just beyond Lake Street with Walton Center, is all the way up bridge. And going up the bridge was actually an add-on, because what we're trying to do is create a citywide pedestrian and bicycle system. We have an alternative transportation plan than the one piece. So it doesn't, might make sense if we're just connecting downtown. And so it's, it's a larger picture.
You agree with the pointer?
Uh, sure.
Wave in your arms, it'll be good to use.
All right, so here's 520, and then Adam, go to the next one. So downtown, you've got, all the way to Alomoro, across the Hampton, down to pretty much Castle Street. And then from Castle Street from 520 down to Bern Derry. And you've actually seen Bern Derry use their own private funds to do on their side the DRI project for us, which was, we are grateful for. So we're not ripping up what they just did. So that is kind of some example of it. So this is a map of most of Geneva, so this is the DRI area, which has been, this is our project here. But wanted to mention that we are about to go into, we just got grant funding two years ago, to extend the planning for this pedestrian network into the north end neighborhoods. And so part of that includes the schematic design continuing the boulevard and pedestrian and bicycle, figuring out how to get across the railroad, which may mean going up and over. The elevator rail line, which the grassroots group is already way ahead of us, moving faster than our government's planning, which is exciting. Council Prue's been involved, and others in that. But it is really looking at this interconnected system that will also get us connected to the trails that go to the east of us. And then this, there's more projects that are trying to get us connected to the town and beyond. And so DRI is really exciting, but it just, so you know, it's connected to a larger system. And our hopes is that once we get some of this design, we'll go after some of, or the DOT funding for this piece, and other funding for these projects. So just, this is looking at it like from the sky, of course. This is 520, and just to highlight, we are reducing the lanes down to one in each direction except for turning lanes. And one of that pieces to create that boulevard deal, we don't want people zooming past. We will have a dedicated bicycle track here that will continue across and connect to the tunnel. We will also have a separated path for pedestrians and two-way shared-use path going up the bridge. This, talking about just public works and time, there is a lot of plants, a lot of trees, and what's known as green infrastructure. So stormwater is going into these plantings instead of to, instead of into, like, Council Prue.
What would be the surface of the bike paths?
It is, to my knowledge, it's asphalt, but it's got green. So you can see the path will be green, but it is asphalt.
I think it's fixed.
On that. So next one. So next, you can just see the profile, so you've got sidewalk, you've got the two-way bike path, you've got, you needed a barrier for that. There is still on the shoulder, if you are a more advanced cyclist and you want to be traveling with traffic, there's still that piece. But travel lane, this is what's called like the safety medium. So if someone's walking across, they can pause here, and then try to travel in to see when's a turning lane. This is the current shared-use paths on the lake side. So you're really starting to build a system that is not just about cars on 520. So this is the East Castle that was of much concern with Lake Drum. And Council Borough asked a really good question here, so you have the bike path that comes in, and then you transition back to regular traffic. And you can see here, there's a shared use up here at Castle. This is kind of the standard practice to give a cyclist a transition from being all alone to back with. Another question that Councilor Borough had, especially on this block, overall, in the whole system, we're losing a few spots, but in here, we're actually keeping the same. I didn't know the answer. It's parking here, there's parking here. So this is Lake Drum, and as you know, Lake Drum didn't have as much space, so they have a parklet. Their parklet can still be out here. This is, if you're looking at the different colors, this is actually an exposed concrete, this is regular concrete, and this is papers. So you're starting to create this, I would say sophisticated language on the ground. And there will also be, the Public Art Committee's worked really hard on quotes and signage and just other features embedded in, in the public spaces to make it feel just like our own. This is like a little seat wall, if you haven't mentioned picture. So I took a picture of, this is teasing me out there. Here's the curb path. The parklet's going to be going out here, so you're actually gaining so much more public space than we'll have. You can see there's public seating there, some of the seats, there's even like chess boards and play features embedded in here. So you're really starting to gain. This is Castle Street pictures. Actually, we just go to the next one.
Sage, are you saying that they'll keep that parklet, or they'll get it back?
They'll have to remove it during construction, and he's already, Victor is working on an alternative location. There's no way to have it still there when it's under construction. So we're working with him on that piece. Here's an example, if you're saying is you're gaining that space. These are the green infrastructure, and when we talk about extra public work time, volunteer time, I'm actually going to a student class for HWS, has been working on a project for kind of a maintenance plan and a volunteer plan. Joe Vannuti's been working really hard, Green Committee's been working hard on more volunteers at the lakefront, but it will take more people power, whether it's, we're contracting with BID, whether we're adding more public work staff, or, or. These are seat walls. I wanted to highlight, these features, they're actually on your budget. So if you go to your budget document, there's three images on the front page, on the appendix page, on the back page. If you go to the next one, these are actually made with dance metal, has been fabricated on. This was on our agriculture history. This is on some of our social equity over the, there's quotes back decades that the Public Art Committee worked with the historical society to find. So this is kind of reminiscent of that. They'll be kind of language sharing all of, of those pieces. So trying to make something that's not just anywhere USA. Here's just a profile again, of seeing approximately like where our sidewalk ends and then where it really extends. Next one, I think, I think that might be. This is just exchange. So another example, I'll pull out, where am I, fill in, Captain's Room, another cafe space. That concrete is actually the same, but they get additional space, so there's a green infrastructure. So if you think about their cafe tables will now be up against a seat wall, or up against green infrastructure, it's kind of just a car. And so some of those benefits, I think are important.
Before we leave that slide, I see backed in angled parking.
Oh, don't ignore that.
Thank you, thank you.
Ignore that. That, we just didn't say do it again. You're not doing, oh yeah, sorry.
It's going the other way.
It's going the other way.
Back in, too.
This is from the original slash that, no back in, don't worry, don't have a hard tack. Okay.
I, I noticed there was also one lane restrictions on 520. Is that, is that because this is the old version?
No, there's, well, what do you, there's one lane's on 520, separate turning lanes. You're going down to one lane.
I thought that the, I thought that they weren't going forward that because of the speed restrictions it would have required.
No, so, I think we're, we can stop screen sharing. I'll get this back to you afterwards. But the 520, we cannot change the speed limit signs to be reduced speed until we can prove that the road will actually slow people down. And so we have to kind of do it backwards. We'll make that, we can make that request again. But right now, we couldn't change the speed limit. So it'll be going down to one, one lane. The road is designed for speed, and that's what it was designed for.
Okay, nice. Wasn't there a significant public outreach and, and comment on not doing that?
With the one lane?
Yeah, with the one lane.
One lane? There were some people that were in opposition, but not.
Not significant?
Not to.
There was more pushback on Castle, because we were talking one way at one time. And it was like, no way, don't do that. So I think that was a big change there.
Correct. Yeah, East Castle at one point was coming, coming to the downtown, you can't leave downtown, that day.
That's how we like it. You can come, but you can never leave.
Right, right. So on, on Wednesday, coming before you, is a budget amendment for two things. One, we didn't know if the state would be giving us funds for our regular mill and pave. We did not put it in the budget. So that will be in there as well as DOT actually increase the budget for municipalities, and we'll be asking for a portion of that to close the gap for where the bids came in. So we're excited about it. If that gets approved, we'll get under contract and get going. We have an opportunity to test pilot a new app that's called Instant Input, that will, I think, be a good tool for us to use for people to be able to stay up to date on the project. That's one of the main concerns. And we'll get the schedule going right after that.
Great stuff. I met with Son Blum in Galahan last, when was it? Monday, no, last Friday. And thanked him for the state's push for the chips and the support they've given us on the, the bike paths. I mean, just, it's huge. And he said it was the first time in 17 years the state has increased any chips a lot. So that was, was a benefit, council.
Is there any projection as to the required deficit, or the, or the deficit we have now with the labor that's going to be required to maintain all the new green space in the DRI project? Like, is there a magic number or a sweet spot that we're trying to attain?
In terms of staffing, if we do it.
Staffing, is it like whether we contract out, or whether we hire internal, what's, what's the projected need that we will have after DRI's finished?
I, Joe may disagree, and I will try to figure that number out. I think it's this, it's the now to November, probably two, but I don't get that number.
Now it's on November two, but what about after November?
Well, the winter time, the need for keeping up the weeds and the maintenance goes down. So with the bulk of the time, however, we don't know what the impact on snow removal will be significant. So I'll just say two the whole year.
Okay.
And whether that comes from supporting BID, having additional staff, contracting it out, public works team, and, 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 there's lots of things that we'll be bringing forward, which the budget process will be starting next week.
You could buy us nine shovels, we'll be all right.
Yeah.
Also, who, who's the winner of that bid for, to do the DRI?
So the low bidder right now is Nardozzi.
Nardozzi?
Yep, significantly bit lower than the other bids.
I've had a couple of people ask that question, and I didn't want to say anything until I followed up.
Who do we take complaints to about?
Sorry, you're okay, you're okay. But I, I know Joe has mentioned a couple times at the Shade Tree Committee that he's, he's worried that there's 9,200 plants that we're putting in through the DRI, 9,200. And he's worried about how are we going to keep them up, which is the question, I guess, that just came up. And my question is, is the, is the DRI, or BID responsible for keeping any of the plants up downtown, or is that going to be all city?
That's, on these, this is our project, and that was the commitment of previous council to take it on us to be able to pay for that additional maintenance.
We know we watered plants and stuff like that, shovel work, but this isn't something we'll be keeping up with.
It could, if we increase the, the funds for them to do it.
I'd like to consider that.
Or at least we, we could ask them.
When we get to what Frank's talking about on the agenda, I remember Glenwood Cemetery used to be, the grass used to be cut by Bob Hurley, who wasn't, who wasn't a union employee. We hired somebody outside. So I think, really, I wonder if there was some opportunity to hire some lower wage people to really keep up with that stuff. I don't think our DPW people are going to be able to. That's, that can be overwhelming. That's, that's a lot of plants, especially when they start growing. There's going to be, you know, crowding and everything, there's going to be a lot of movement, moving them around. So maybe that's something we could look at again, Frank, when we get to your session on DPW staffing or outsourcing, which I think is a good answer. And I talked to Joe about that, he's not opposed to it. It's like having summer staff. And, you know, since, you know, union labor's so expensive for things that aren't really required with their talent, maybe you could outsource.
Adopt a plot.
That's it?
Yeah. Adopt, adopt a plot.
So the cemetery is.
Make some plots, right?
Letters. I mean, I'm just throwing an idea out there. I spent a lot of time out there, so. So that, so you have a group that's responsible for one section or one plot of the cemetery, whether, whether they pay for it, it's a volunteer group or whatever it is, but it's reasonable. I mean, it's just, it's just an idea.
Couple comments over there?
I just asked, I wanted to ask who, who takes complaints? Is that code on construction companies?
Well, I guess it depends. So in general, send all complaints to complaints@genova.ny.us, because then it gets filtered to the right person, and then it also gets tracked for this type of complaint. So that's the easiest. But I guess it depends on the construction process.
All right, I'll send it to that.
Okay, thank you.
Keep going. One of the things I'm concerned about is, I know that you've brought on Mark Parries to help supervise on a part-time basis all these projects. And I guess he's been on Lafayette project, but I suppose he's going to, he's not going to assist on DRI?
So DRI is being contracted through Barton and Judas, who will have the engineer and inspector full-time there, because you really, because the project is so enormous, that they're going to be having work here. And, you know, they're, it will have dedicated people who aren't doing other's new jobs.
Okay, because the thing, thing is, is that I have some fears. And one is, I just, one of them was, I was going to express, was I want us to make sure that we are having an arm's length supervision of the Nardozzi operation, okay? We've gotten a lot of our jobs, and do a lot of work for us and everything else, but they're not our buddies, okay? They are a contractor, they have a contract, and I want specs followed. And, and that's something that I've already talked to, to you and Joe about and stuff like that. So I'm glad to hear that we're not directly, but it means that, you know, Barton and Judas are not our friends either. And, and we need to hold them to account, that Nardozzi completes the job, and that they stay on top of it. And I'm just saying this because it's, it's important that they know that we're going to watch, and that we're going to ask them to go back if it's not done according to the way Joseph wants it, and Joseph's really the man, and, 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 you know, and you. So that's, those are, those are some of my concerns. Now, I'm, since I've got a constituency along Lafayette, not just mine in the fourth ward, but as far as I'm concerned, all the way to the other end, we are bound together, us Lafayette Avenues. And there are complaints showing up, and I've discussed that with you and Joe. And I'm hoping that you're going to communicate with everyone on that street. But one of the things also that I've mentioned to Joe, and he's been kind enough to listen to. But one of the things also that I've mentioned to Joe, and he's been kind enough to listen to me about this, is we need traffic calming stuff on the slope of Lafayette, from Oak Street to Maxwell. Before this, even as rough as the road was before this construction project started, people were roaring up and roaring down. And people habitually go through the stop sign on Oak. They look both ways and go, just drive through it. So one of the things Joseph and I discussed was putting crosswalks down, not speed bumps, but putting crosswalks at the intersection of Lafayette and Oak, and Maxwell, and Lafayette, and at Spring Street and Hillside, because those three streets are subject to significant, well, the one in the middle, speeds are 40 to 50 miles an hour sometimes. You can sit there and watch it, I sit on my front porch and watch it.
Counselor, we're kind of talking...
It's the same.
I understand, we're talking DRI, that would be a question for Wednesday.
I understand that, but I'm going to spare us all, we don't have to do it at the council meeting on Wednesday night.
Promise?
But that's, yes.
Okay.
But that's my concern. I'm not going to do it twice, but the thing is, is that, those are my concerns.
Okay.
Okay? We had a project at North Genesee, and the previous city manager said we were going to traffic calm it by painting all the lines in and everything else after it's done. And it was never done.
You ever see the cool 3D site and crosswalks? It almost makes you hesitate, because it looks like you're going to run it.
Okay, I know, but that's all great. But the fact is, is that the previous city council manager didn't put those in. And we were promised them, because the residents complained.
I don't know what promise.
How fast people were going. He said, when this project's done, we're going to put all the lines in, and the bike, didn't happen. So I'm going to express my concerns.
Okay.
Okay, and I will bring it up at another council meeting if, you know, but not Wednesday.
Okay, good, I'm trying to stay on topic with DRI.
I was off topic, like, I just want to, I think there's a process to have a speed meter put in your street, and you can, and it'll just record it, so you can get, and it also does two things.
I know all those things. We've had, we've had cops sitting out there and all that other stuff. Fact is...
I'd say, well, DRI?
For say, yes.
Question for Sage.
I agree. So the East Castle Street project and the eastern side of 520 project, that's going on at the same time?
All the downtown will go on, so it'll start closer to Lake Street and move. And we'll get the...
Right, which will be...
And then 520 will be after.
Okay, so all 520s at once, it's not according to that slide then?
Correct.
Because you had the 520 in red, as well as Castle Street, and then the other part of 520 on a different slide.
My understanding is that it's Streetscape, but 520, but we'll get that, we'll get on the map going, our communication.
All right, that's very good. Okay, thank you. Counselor?
Just one thing, and that is that, you know, we've all heard the concerns of the people that have, you know, their businesses on Castle Street. Are they, is there some kind of a plan to stage so that you sort of, you know, like, like Lafayette Avenue is the opposite of what you want to do? Let's do a sidewalk from Genesee Street all the way to Maxwell first. Now, you know, obviously, they won't be able to stand that.
Well, they won't, so it won't be, do the whole block, be done with everything, and then move on. That won't be able to happen. For us to pay for that would be still require.
Right.
But they are obligated to keep access to the businesses and do all that mapping of how to get there always, and that's the continuing...
And you feel satisfied that there, this whole idea of access?
Barton and Judas in the specs did a good job with what they had to require. It comes at a, you know, cost of extra work for the contractor, but that's important. That being said, we are going to have to make adjustments as we learn and grow with what's working and what's not working.
Okay, but there is a, they've been, they've been tuned a little bit, too. You got to keep these businesses open and accessible. Okay, okay, good.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Counselor Solomon, directed by Counselor Gallinari, all in favor?
Aye.
Any...